I'll call this meeting of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Here.
Leyland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Jelka?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here. Please transfer a moment of silence to reflect on today's actions. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll first entertain a motion on the agenda as proposed or as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Is it moved and seconded? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, agenda is approved. Next we'll move on to public comments if there's anybody in the boardroom or online. Hearing none, we'll move on to item three, this proclamation, Operation Green Light for Veterans.
Would you like me to read the talk?
Yes, please.
Whereas the residents of Blackhawk County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community and the armed forces, and whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas Blackhawk County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all, and whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, AMVETS, Marine Corps League, disabled American veterans, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year, and whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, and whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future, and whereas studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life, and whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service, and whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for Veterans, and whereas Blackhawk County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted, therefore be it resolved with designation as Green Light for Veterans County, Blackhawk County hereby declares from November 1st through Veterans Day, November 11th, 2024, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Therefore be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, Blackhawk County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence from November 4th through the 11th, 2024.
Thank you. A special thanks to all the veterans that serve on our VA Commission and to the excellent work that you do, Mr. Lovelace, every day, and to all the veterans that work for Blackhawk County. We appreciate your service then and your service now. I'll have the green lights on my house, for sure.
You were going to speak, I think, to Yolando?
Not intentionally, but...
Well, you don't have to.
Yolando Lovelace, the Executive Director of Blackhawk County Veterans Affairs, and on behalf of the Blackhawk County Veterans Commission, I have Colonel Korf here also. But again, I just wanted to thank the Board of Supervisors for the multitude of support that you have distributed throughout the five years that I've been here supporting our veterans. And then what those words really mean something from a veteran, but it also means I'm reminded of what Abraham Lincoln quoted, and it says, "To honor the soldiers and sailors everywhere who bravely bear their country's cause honors also the citizens who care for the brothers in the fields and serve as he best can in some cause." And Operation Green Light kind of reflects what Abraham Lincoln was saying, was don't forget about the veterans who defended this country, who stood up on a creed of, "I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all the enemies, foreign and domestic," and still live by that creed today in that standpoint. So it's just, it's an honor to be before you. I thank you that you guys are going to allow us to participate in that, and this is a thank Grant because he's the one who dug that up out of the weeds a couple of years ago. So Grant, thank you for that and that standpoint. It's just another way of us saying that Blackhawk County is a veteran-friendly county, and we thank you for it. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Yolando.
Do you have a photo?
Yes.
Yolando, if you got Abraham Lincoln quotes just stored away for...
I know.
Oh, I guess, oh, they're always going to make a statement.
You gotta be careful though, because it's a fact check, yeah.
For unintentional.
All right. Let's go two steps this way.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, one, two, three. Very good. Thank you.
Henry Korf, I'm the chairman of the Blackhawk County VA Commission, and I thank you again, and I want to, I'm just kind of tag on to what Yolando said, and that is, I know as myself as a veteran for this county and on the board, your support over the last couple of years that I've been around has been exemplary. Appreciate all the things that you do for our office and actually for our veterans in this county, and we certainly do appreciate it. I can't say thank you enough, so that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no further comments, this is a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
I don't believe...
We need a...
Oh, you have a motion?
Motion.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Yes, resolution is approved. Next we'll move on to item four, Claims and Payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the various, approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue payments against the various settlements of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Michelle?
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payment today is $582,160.47, and we're making payments of $2,912.95 from the 60-40 fund. We do have a couple of exciting payments today. We are paying for the election office furniture, phase one of the courthouse, $70,635.09. It's exciting to see that moving along. And also, in the road department, they are paying for a tandem axle dump truck for $160,172, and I believe that's all the significant payments today.
Yeah, this is, any questions, Board? This is a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz? Yes, the resolution is approved. Next we'll receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Morning, Board. Ryan Brennan, Assistant County Engineer. A few things going on in our maintenance department this week. With the rainfall expected later this week, we will have the graders out on the gravel roads, getting those prepared for winter. We do also have crews out doing ditch cleaning and brush cutting throughout the county, and while it may seem odd on a warm day in October, we are getting ready for winter and putting plows and sanders on. So we did have a bridge patching project up on Union Road finished last week, so it's good to see that get fixed and open back up here. Other than that, just a lot of odds and ends to prepare for winter or moving forward with other projects, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other department heads or elected officials wish to provide an update this morning? All right, we'll move on to the minutes approved in the October... Oh, go ahead.
I apologize. Gabby DeWitt, Marketing Coordinator, I just wanted to give you a branding update. Our online apparel store will be opening hopefully next week. There will be stores, basically stores set up for each department, and each department will have the option of just purchasing primary logo on their apparel, or they can have a department-specific logo. So might say information technology or assessor's office or something like that. The store will remain open all the time, and then the apparel will just cycle through based on the season that we're in. And then for vehicle branding, we've made our second order of vehicle decals through Waterloo signs. It included conservation, veterans, assessors, and IT. The last department that we need to finalize sizing and style will be facilities, and then we'll be done with that, and then we'll be in the process of getting those on the vehicles. And then I had sent an email last week about the TCU Certified Public Communicator Program, and I just wanted to make sure that I had board support to go ahead and apply for that. I wouldn't come and ask for the travel funds until I'm for sure approved for it, but walking away from that TCU program, it's two consecutive weeks in two consecutive Julys, one week, two consecutive Julys, and the curriculum is focused on strategic planning as it relates to public sector communications, and you walk away with a three-year communications plan, either a general plan or a crisis communications plan, or if you're really ambitious, you can do both, and then also some policies for communications. And since I'm the first in this role as marketing coordinator, I feel like that would be very beneficial to us as a county. So before I make my application, I just wanted to make sure I had board support, or if it needs to go to an agenda item, I can put it on the agenda next week.
I'm supportive.
Anybody would prefer to have it on the agenda? No, sounds good to me.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Because you're ambitious, we expect both.
Yes.
Well, it's, you know, failure to plan is...
A plan to fail.
A plan to fail, yeah. So I would actually prefer to have both. I would sleep better, so. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, any other department heads or elected officials to provide an update? All right, we will move on to the minutes approved in the October 22nd, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It moved and seconded. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. Next we'll move on to the consent agenda. This will be approved with a single resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. Next we'll move on to item eight. This is a resolution that the agreement to provide $200,000 utilizing American Rescue Plan Act funds to the city of Gilmoreville for its emergency management building project previously approved on October 12th, 2023, be acknowledged and directed the chair to sign.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Would you like to say a few words?
Thanks for being here, Steve.
No problem. Scott Becker, Mayor Pro Tem for the city of Gilmoreville. We had come a year ago to get these funds. The idea was we're going to be last in while the USDA is involved, and they said that they have to be the last in for the funds. We're hoping to come a little under budget, but we're going to be basically right at budget, just slightly over the couple of small change orders we got coming, but progress has been coming very nicely, and we're getting to the end, and hopefully the next couple of months we'll be in the building and ready to use it. So other than that, it's, like I said, we're just right at the very end, and it's time to get everybody cleaned up, so.
You said in a couple of months you'll be able to...
We're hoping to be in by the, depends who you talk to, which one of the contractors, but hopefully December 1st was a goal, but there's some things in back where we're not going to get till Thanksgiving week, so probably more January 1st timeframe, so.
Okay. I know I saw some percentages and things like that in some of the reports I think we provided, and so I was wondering what, yeah, where we were at in that process. So that's good to hear, I guess. Good for all of you, I suppose, too.
If anybody wants to come out and check it out sometime, just let us know. We'll be more...
Absolutely.
To what's going on, and we'll let you know when we have the open house, so.
Okay.
Awesome.
No, I'm excited that you got the USDA secured, so.
It's a little more difficult than we anticipated, but it's still, yeah, it's all happening, so it's good.
Yeah, I've written a few USDA grants this year, and it's tough.
So all the other funding, no problem with them?
No problem with all the funding, yeah. Everything's coming through.
Okay. I was going to say, great, just that they have to be bottom line, yeah. Michelle, did you have any questions, too? I was going to say as far as the financing of it. I know there's some things we wanted to talk about with the contract, but I didn't know for Scott.
Well, if you happen to have the actual amounts, like all your contract amounts and your sources, I would love to have that.
Okay, we can work with, have Minister Kog be here. He's just going to be here today to help with that, some of the information from him as well, too, and he's been the general person taking care of all that, so.
Yeah, I think that was one of my questions, too, or last week even. It was estimates and things like that. It didn't say actual.
We're right in, right in line with all of it, so it's coming in close.
So you're feeling good about everything, too, the way it's coming in? That's great.
Very good.
Thanks.
The House just reached out once again to any of us, and been wanting to help you out, so.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it, Scott.
I don't know if you worked on the contract. Michelle looked at it again, too, and so I said some of the questions that I'd had in there were some of the ones, I know even you'd asked the board in your email as far as what kind of documentation we wanted. Were there suggestions or recommendations, I guess, that you were thinking of? The invoices, I know, before we pay, that wasn't it? What was the securing or the certification, I guess I had questions on.
Yeah, so actually, when I'm asking for the actual contracts, maybe I, I don't have time, but maybe I can draft a form that would show each contract, that they can fill in the amounts and the sources, so that that's how I think you would certify that they've provided you what you need.
Kind of that sources and uses document, which I was kind of questioning.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. I was going to say that that sounds feasible for you to...
I'm sure.
So can we utilize the same form that's provided to USDA, so you don't have to create, is that sufficient for...
Well, I've been given something that was told it was just an estimated budget, so if you're, I don't, I think we don't at this point want the budget. I think we want the actuals now.
I guess what I'm saying is the forms that he has to ultimately provide to USDA, is that sufficient to provide to the county?
I don't know, because I haven't seen that form. What they gave me, that they said they were giving USDA was something called an estimated budget, and that's why I'm clarifying that I think we're asking for the actual, because that was the board action you took before, was to know the actual amount. So I just don't have, no doubt. I was going to say you'd have it in your...
Presumably.
Are there any other contract questions?
Yeah, what was the total cost of the project?
I believe, rough time, I had 2.8.
2.8?
2.8, Tom?
Okay.
Some of the things I know we'd see is 2.7 plus, so. You had some change orders and things, too.
Yes, well, a few small change orders, nothing drastic, but there are a few changes over what we, it is normal.
Did you guys, did you guys have to bond for any of it?
We bonded 1.25 million of that amount.
1.25, okay. Thank you.
I was, I was just curious if you've had, your departments had to respond to any of the recent field fires.
Yes, there've been some of those calls, yeah. Outside of town there, Fort and Jessup area, there's a big one, they were there.
It seems like it might be an issue that's with us for a while.
Hopefully after the rain tomorrow, we'll be able to have that for a while.
All right, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions, Board?
Cool.
All right, hearing none. This is a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is a resolution of the contract with Lexipol LLC for the use of Cortico Wellness App, designed specifically for first responders at a cost of $11,249.25 to be approved as recommended by Nathan Neath, jail administrator.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Nate?
Good morning, Board. If you'll recall, this was kind of a trial run we did last year, a one-year app directed specifically at first responders, so that actually includes all of our staff at the sheriff's offices under it, as well as dispatch and conservation. Like I said, it's specifically trained for people working in our field. Just to kind of show over the last year, again, we've got a dashboard, kind of something, got a dashboard where I can look and see what people have been using. Obviously, it doesn't tell me who logged in or exactly how many times or that kind of thing, but over the last year we've had 31 people log in, which I'd like to see that number increase, but I think for a first-year trial thing, that's not too bad of a number. Some of the, what they call toolkit engagement that the people have been looking into, and these are things that kind of discuss coping skills, how to work with things. The number one thing has been emotional and mental wellness. There've been people looking at sleep, physical fitness, nutrition, trauma, career wellness, and mindfulness, peer support, that kind of stuff. And then there's also self-assessment tests that can be taken, and some of those that have been taken are adult ADHD, sleep test, an anger sale, perceive stress scale, adverse childhood experiences, alcohol screening, compassion fatigue assessment, depression screening tool, suicide risk assessment, and a well-being index. So, I mean, people are using it for exactly why we got it, a lot of important things. I think, I mean, just the fact that people are looking into those things, trying to take care of themselves, trying to keep themselves healthy, it's definitely worth renewing the contract and going with another year on it.
So you want us 31 people...
Do you know the numbers of the conservation, who's participating?
I don't. It doesn't tell me whether it's dispatch, whether it's conservation, whether it's us, but it's all, they base their pricing on tiers, so whether it's between 100, 150, 150 to 200. So even if we dropped, tried to drop one out or one or the other out, the price would stay the same, so we obviously want to keep on including everyone that we can into it.
So everyone's included, it's just that 31 are actually what have been tracked.
31 have logged into it over the last year, and, yeah, I want to try and push it harder. I know we pushed it out when it first came, and then from a training or administrative standpoint, we haven't done as much with it the last year as we probably should, so that's something I'm going to double down on this coming year.
And this is an annual contract?
Yes, it's an annual contract. I said we did it out of the 40% portion of the room and board last year. We didn't put it in the budget or anything because we kind of wanted to see the test run, how it goes. With this, your approval going forward, it'd be nice just to put it in that as a line item in that fund and just kind of let it go in the, in the future, but.
Not in the 40%, but in the budget, you mean?
I think, after talking to Michelle, we're probably good with that, in the 40%. I know about a month ago I had kind of alluded to, maybe we'd be able to help out with the Axon thing out of that. After printing the numbers with Michelle, that's probably not going to be a real feasible option with the amount of money on that, but something as relatively small as this, we should be good with, I think.
Okay. Well, I was going to say, if you want to comment, please do, but I was going to say otherwise, I know I saw, Michelle provided some information to us on the 60-40, and I thought, wow, if you had, you know, substantial funds to cover this, that was where I was wondering, too, what we were going to have available to us in the 60-40 for going forward for Axon or whatever, and it sounds like, yeah.
Unfortunately, after looking through the numbers, I don't know if there's going to be much there for us for Axon.
So when we probably, I don't know, before we put that on the agenda again to look at the Axon, I think that Mike was working on the contract and that type of thing, to lead that information, I suppose, because I think you and Brian both were talking about having something to provide, and that may have changed.
Yeah, we definitely have to work on how we're going to pay for Axon. I know you've got ARPA money earmarked for that. There's brands that got some money for it, and then, so I mean, kind of my thought on that is we've got about $800,000 between those two. That was, if we do half and half on the first two years, then that leaves us eight years of contract with just over $100,000 per year on that, but we'd be three years out on before I had to worry about that.
So we do have ARPA money for two years of that?
So this does not qualify, I don't believe, for expense category, so we are using replacement revenue. We, we do have the 750 budgeted, and then there is, you know, I'll be so glad when some of our big contracts are awarded, because we just don't know for sure how much is left in the pot, but hopefully there'll be some, and perhaps we can fund the phasers with that as well. I might feel a little bit differently than what they're suggesting about how to fund it. I, Axon wants you to pay them annually, and I, I don't see any point in prepaying them, so I, I would suggest we just pay annually, and I'll, we'll keep that ARPA pot and pay it as long as we can.
Yeah, I guess my thought on that was if there's a 750 earmarked for it, that's obviously got to be spent, I think, by, what, '26, so if you did...
Not on, not the source we're using. There's so many rules.
Okay, sorry, my mistake there, but.
I understand. The pot we're using doesn't have that timeline, so you're okay.
Okay, that was my thought, I guess, on why I wanted it. I think Brian's got $50,000 earmarked for it.
If it had to be spent, yeah.
That $800 covers the first couple of years, then you can make it a lot more palatable for the remainder of that contract, but.
Different rules.
Axon, I know we've definitely got to get together and formally to plan on how we're going to do that, so.
Thank you. Okay, that was off, that was where I was just coming from. Not that $11,000 I was questioning at all, so.
Yeah, I think we're good on the $11,000 for a while anyway. I mean, I think we've talked about before, that room and board fund is, is a dying fund, but for a few years anyway, it should be good for this $11,000 expenditure.
No, and I appreciate that you brought the trial run to us. I thought it was really great, kind of innovative programs to offer, and even if it helped just one person this last year, it would be worth it, so this is a really great service that, that we're offering to our employees that face stressful and traumatic situations on a regular basis, and so this is critical. Are there any other questions, Board?
Oh.
All right, this is a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item nine, other business, this is, or item eight, this is a resolution. The lowest responsible bid received from O'Brien Steel Peoria, Illinois for Project L-3017, steel materials for Mount Vernon Road Bridge with a total bid of $13,078.40. The engineer's estimate was $23,200. Be awarded as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Ryan?
If you have any questions, let me know, but it's just a material purchase for one of our projects for next year. Our bridge group will be starting to build this bridge over the winter in the shop.
Okay. Any questions, Board? Hearing none, this is a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, the resolution is approved. Item B, this is a resolution that the 2024 Weed Commissioners' report be approved and directed the chair to sign for the same as submitted by Griffin Kabalka, Blackhawk County Weed Commissioner.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Griffin?
Morning, Board. Just a, kind of a total of the weed complaints this year. We had eight total this year spanning through private and town municipalities as well. There was no letters served. A total that I worked on those, eight complaints, is about eight hours total. The weeds that were called in, or I called in, were Japanese knotweed, poison hemlock, teasel, which is a new one that we're trying not to have in the county, candis, ococklebur, wild carrot, purple love grass, and field bindweed, so. Nothing really has changed as much for those complaints. It's pretty typical, and if you have any questions, just let me know.
What was that new one, again?
Teasel, common teasel, yeah. It's a, one we do not want here.
Okay.
There's a few spots in city limits and a few outside, so they're really small, so hopefully we can keep them under control.
Okay.
Spread like a wildfire.
What is your process for that?
So if I...
As far as timing?
Say, receive a complaint in the engineer's office, they let me know, give their information or create a work order through our work order system. I contact that landowner or complaine, and then I work with them to keep them anonymous if they so choose. If they choose to come out with, that's on their own. I have to keep everybody anonymous through contacting the adjacent landowner or complaint area. Then I go in, try to find a phone number or address for that person that the noxious weed is on their land. Then I go in and assess the, the problem, take photos, things like that, and then with that landowner, I come up with a plan to eradicate those weeds. Sometimes it's after the June 1st deadline that legally we're supposed to get rid of those noxious weeds, so after that, I try to work, you know, as diligently as I can. If they have to hire a contractor, things like that, I understand that it takes time and, you know, and things like that, so that's kind of my process. And then if they don't get ahold of me within that time, I haven't served any letters yet, but if I contact them multiple times, I'll serve them a 10-day notice, and then if nothing's done, or at least I can... And then if nothing's done, or at least a contractor is hired, then I'll go in and do the work for them and build that personnel for the work that I did and the chemicals and stuff that we used, so.
And you've not had to do that?
No, I haven't had to do that. So I try to give people the benefit of the doubt. But if they're unwilling to work or don't get back ahold of me, you know, these things need to be taken care of before they go out to seed, so.
Thank you. That's, that's quite a bit to get accomplished, only per hour.
Right, right, yeah. I try to, try to be pretty quick and try to find at least an address or a phone number to give those people a call. And most of the times, the land, the adjacent landowner has the phone number that calls in or something, so.
I think this might be a good future kind of social media thing to work like Gabby on. It's like a, I picture like a grid chart of how to identify all these different, what to be looking out for.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. That's something that we can work on our, you know, either our website on the engineering side under my, you know, county roadsides page or a separate page at her for the weed commissioner art as well, yeah.
Another front page article in the Courier.
Well.
Hollywood.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, not a problem. Any other questions?
Yeah, I got one. If it got to the point where you said you had to issue a letter and then maybe potentially a fine?
Correct.
Do we, do we have a county ordinance that defines that?
Oh, it's in the Iowa Code, Section three seventeen.
So the code allows us then to propose a fine?
That's correct. I can, basically, within those ten days, depending on if they're willing to work or not, I can issue like a hundred dollar, ten dollar fine per day up to a hundred dollars. Or, you know, I don't have to issue that money in those ten days. But I can, but I will bill them our state rates for, you know, the work that we did on that said land, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the code, code has the numbers on there to back up if we got that far?
The state rate stuff would be under the DOTs, basically, their rates that they use, yep.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Board, any other questions? Yeah, this is a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder. Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Short? Yes, the resolution is approved. Item C, this is a resolution that the appointment of Griffin Kabalka as the twenty-twenty-five Blackhawk County Weed Commissioner be approved as recommended by Catherine Nicholas County Engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. This is a resolution. Any questions, Board? Okay, this is a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder. Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Short? Yes, the resolution is approved. Item D, this is a resolution to designate the Blackhawk County Conservation to inspect applications filed to determine eligibility and to make an eligibility determination as to each such application for a fruit tree or forest reservation tax exemption in accordance with Section four-two-seven-C point two-one-two of the Code of Iowa and authorize the county assessor to adjust the records accordingly.
Some was on love.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion, questions? This is a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder. Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Short? Yes, resolution is approved. Item E, this is a motion that the travel request submitted by Amanda Fezmyer, Human Resources Director, be approved and direct the Chair to sign for the same estimated cost of five thousand, one hundred dollars to attend the National Public Employees Labor Relations Association Annual Conference in Portland, Oregon from June twenty-first to June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Modification, I didn't realize Cherry Galmeyer, our Senior Human Resources Generalist, will also be attending that. So she was on the application, but the request looks like it's just me going to Portland. But there will be two of us, and that was part of the budget request that I included last year, so. But I can answer any questions. It's a great educational event for labor relations, human resources professionals who work for public sector. And I've been to it twice now, and I'm excited to, you know, expand this to our staff and hope to bring Anna at the next following year.
So this budget carries both of you then?
Yes, yep.
All right, any other questions, Board? Hearing none, this is a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All as opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, item F, this is discussion, possible board action. The telework policy be approved effective October twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four as recommended by the Policy Review Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All right.
Hey.
You had discussion or comments?
Yes, we can discuss this. So I did send out the telework policy to the Board of Supervisors, and this does come, it came before policy review. I just want to give a little background on this. So two years ago, we really started this whole process of really exploring telework. Obviously, the pandemic changed a lot of the way that employers work across the country throughout our state. And it did start to force even public employers to kind of reevaluate how we would continue to do business in the event that we have another emergency, pandemic, or something that would require us to continue to be efficient and effective, maybe not in the traditional work setting. So, you know, like, two years ago, we kind of piloted a few departments. I have been getting requests from department heads that see this, that it's been valuable in certain cases. It's not something that can apply countywide. Obviously, you know, there are certain roles that if you're operating equipment, like a road grader, this will never apply to a position like that. But several of our offices, whether it's in public health, some of the customer service, IT, human resources, those all are, there are similar roles outside of even Blackhawk County that are able to be done remotely. So this is not a proposal to do any kind of full remote option. It is a hybrid. And so I just kind of want to go over a couple of those highlights that, based on what we've learned the past two years, we feel that two days per week for like regular remote for a given office is the most that would be approved. It could be less than that. For example, you know, HR only has three people. Traditionally, we've had three people in our office, so two days for us would be kind of a lot, where we would maybe only do one day a week, so. But I'm here to answer any questions. I did get a chance to run it by department heads. We actually had a small little steering committee that was made up of our IT director, human resources, public health director, deputy from the recorder's office, and our assessor, and kind of brought a different experience and comfort level, this group. We had some that were very versed in remote work, such as like public health, IT, even HR. And then recorder's office and assessor's more like, what is this? How is this going to work? And kind of brought forward some of those concerns as to how this wouldn't be implemented, you know, for their offices when you have a lot of public-facing interaction. But maybe you have a certain task that is done solely on a computer or even a phone. So for the recorder's office, that's indexing, for example. You could sit and index eight hours a day, and that would support the operations of the recorder's office that isn't necessarily public-facing. So if it is approved today, it would become part of our handbook. It would be applied to, essentially, anyone could explore this option. There are certain criteria based on position eligibility, employee eligibility, which would be like their work performance, and then also department eligibility. So this does even allow a department head who just feels that, you know, most of my staff are not ever going to be able to do remote work. I'm not going to implement this just because I don't feel that it's, you know, equitable or fair across my operations, or it would create, you know, morale issues. They can just deny remote work if they decided that we're denying it for everyone in the department, so. Because I did have that request.
Amanda, is this, are you talking about if we have a, this would be kind of invoked if we're gonna have some kind of a health situation again like we had in the past? Or are you talking about routinely now?
This would be, it would be an option as routine, but it definitely would be the basis for if we would have another pandemic that we could, you know, kind of quickly pivot to be able to, if, for example, we had to shut down the courthouse again, or we had to send people home, that they could be productive at home. Again, some roles won't be able to do that. But it does apply it more regularly. It is intended for, again, up to two days a week, dependent upon the department head's approval. And it just really outlines the criteria and even the expectations that we set forth for individuals that are working remotely. That's kind of been the biggest, I guess, concern is that when we don't have a policy and we're engaging this, how do we hold, you know?
Would the request come back to the Board then for approval of an individual department?
I could certainly provide.
Well, I, I think it's important to note, I'm not speaking against this nor for it, but in all reality, we are a customer-based operation. And in my opinion, the majority of our employees are customer-based. Even if they do one function in a office, I know some of the departments are cross-training. If somebody's gone, then they move over in that position. So I, to be honest with you, I think we need our employees working in the courthouse and serving the people, the taxpayers and the citizens when they come in. So I think this should be really used limitatively and maybe more in a health crisis like COVID.
And I think other department heads share that similar, you know, they feel that they can, if their operations make sense for it, they, you know, can implement it. Others have looked at this as something that, you know, could be a competitive advantage for retaining employees, certainly. Definitely, I would say, in public health, because the state's Iowa Department of Human Services and Health, Human and Health Services is remote. A lot of, this was actually even applied into the last legislative session that open meetings now have to be offered virtually. I think it's just kind of looking at adapting to the way that other businesses have implemented, you know, remote or telework options.
Yeah, I, you know, I agree with that. But I've also read and heard a lot over the last months and years that a lot of departments are pulling, or a lot of companies are pulling their people back in.
Yep.
For product, for productivity. Do we, did we have employees out there now? Because somebody asked me one day, and I said I didn't know, and then I checked into it, and we did. So what departments are allowing this going on prior to this policy?
So the ones that piloted it are, I allowed my staff to do one day a week. IT was allowing their staff to do some, either maybe up to one day a week. Public health has implemented it. It's primarily been for exempt employees, so not ones that are non-exempt in order to make sure that for overtime purposes, we're not, because we don't really have a guide. So it's primarily been for those that are exempt from overtime. And I guess essentially have a little bit more flexibility with how their work is done. It's also been implemented in Roads Department, mostly weather-based or office personnel or kind of emergency situations or even, you know, other unique circumstances. It's been done a little bit in the recorder's office with the management staff with indexing. That's been the example that they've used. It's been done, I believe, in the sheriff's office with a jail diversion social worker at times. I believe our attorney's office has done some, some of the attorneys that support the board offices. Obviously, the board office with a little bit there with the board members. So it's, those are kind of generally what I would expect. And it's just a, a policy that we can then kind of lay out exactly what we expect from employees and that, you know, it is not an entitlement, it is a privilege. It's something that allows us to be a little bit more responsive to employees, you know, where telework has worked and you've gotten a higher rate of productivity out of employees, so.
I just, yeah, I, I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
And I know what the Policy Committee was talking about. I just think it could be a slippery slope with the taxpayers because I think they expect the people that they pay their wages should be at the job. So I think we have to go about this cautiously.
Sure.
Because I've already heard some about this prior, so.
And I think for those that you identified that, yes, those that went full remote, this is, I don't ever see us going full remote. And there have been, you know, other, we built this policy off other Iowa communities, cities and counties. And some HR directors I've talked to, they have said, yeah, we allowed three days. We didn't put a cap on it, and we're now reining it back into a hybrid structure. So what's being proposed is truly hybrid, where you still will be in the office regularly. I don't see us ever going down where we're gonna allow for full remote at an extended period of time. We're just not set up to do that.
What were a couple of the counties that you all have sort of modeled after?
So Lynn County, Johnson County, Scott County, Polk obviously has one as well. First cities that, we looked at Cedar Falls, they have a remote work agreement form and policy. I believe Cedar Falls Utilities has one. And then we also looked at like Iowa City. And then we looked kind of across the nation too, just to, I mean, it's been several years since the pandemic, so there's a lot of good examples and kind of lessons learned from telework. And some of my kind of hesitation or delay with this, as opposed to just approving it two years ago, was to really kind of pilot and learn from those experiences from the departments that where it actually is feasible to work remotely, because it does change the way that you interact. I mean, that is definitely, even as a supervisor, you know, I have to remind myself that person's not out. I need to communicate with them on Teams, or I need to communicate with them via phone. And, you know, our public health department is probably one of the ones that are really ready for this. They all have work phones, cell phones, because of the nature of their work. There are a lot of community health workers, environmental health officers that are out in the field. And then, you know, outside of the clinic, they're really prepared to be able to kind of, move forward with this implementation of a telework policy and one that they feel will benefit their workforce.
Do they, do they work off their own computers, or we supply computers?
So that's a great question. So you would have to have a laptop, and that is one of the criteria. If the technology isn't available, so for example, if a department only has desktops, we're not just gonna buy a bunch of laptops so that someone can work remotely. Now, they may be throughout time, Al's talked about, you know, looking at as we purchase equipment, that that might be rotated out in order to accommodate that. But most physicians already have a laptop because they have to be more mobile anyways to go out to, whether it's other departments or to, you know, service the public to where they have those laptops or mobile devices. But they would be using county-owned equipment or like a laptop. The only kind of personal equipment they could use would be peripheral, such as like a mouse or keyboard, maybe an extra monitor, so.
I think there is a number of safeguards built into this policy, including, you know, the folks have to be able to physically come in if they needed to that day.
Right.
It's not like you can't be using this for having a four-day weekend in Vegas every weekend.
Right.
People will, if they're called into the office, they're gonna, they're gonna be coming in.
Right.
That it's left up to every department head, whether it works for them. And that it's not a guarantee that once granted, that you're always gonna keep it. If it's not working out, it'll be revoked for the position.
Right now, it just for our office, you know, I would feel more comfortable that we have a policy so that I, we can kind of feel that these requests would be a part of a personnel file, be a way for us to feel that it is, you know, evaluated across various different departments right now. We just kind of have a, it's only for those that are exempt and basically management. And we see that it can work for others and would like to apply it more widely. But we can certainly try, I think we talked about policy review coming back in six months and just having department heads kind of report those that, you know, go through this process, seeing how it's worked. And it certainly should be evaluated annually at least. And, and if it proves that it's not the best interest of the organization, then we revisit it and we can always, you know, remove it, so.
Yeah, and I think that's where the Board comes in, where they need to monitor that. So that's why it's important to know that if you're gonna have one of your employees go on this kind of a work schedule, the Board needs to know about it.
I guess I'd push back on that. I trust our department heads. And so I don't know that we need to be in the business of sort of micromanaging those department heads. If, if those department heads see fit, and we're gonna do a six-month or an annual review of the policy anyways, I don't need, I don't know that we need to bog ourselves down with this employee is gonna take, is gonna be working from home one day. That seems.
I'm, I'm just saying, Tavis, it's a bad taste out there with the people that pay the bills. And it is our responsibility, and we're the overseers of all the county, the department heads and all our departments.
But that doesn't mean we didn't micromanage.
And I've heard out there that, again, I'm not against it. I'm just saying, it's something that was done during COVID, but a lot of the companies are pulling them back because of productivity, security reasons, and so forth. So I, I think it should be on a limited basis if we do even use it. And the, I, I don't know. It's, if you get a small office like Amanda's, and she's gone, which she has been, and you have one of her other people is off, and we have one working remote, who do you have in HR then?
Well, that would be an example of where I'd say that person working remote has to come in. Like, if I'm off unexpectedly and the other person's off in Colorado on vacation, and then I have to call in sick for whatever reason, I would say, I'm sorry, but you need to come in, you know, or.
Okay.
But yeah, and that's where, so it is, it's definitely, you have to be, it is essentially your home, which is, you know, we didn't put like a residency requirement or anything. Now, we did, if it's not your home, like, you know, in a department, or you live with a parent, that's fine. But like Chris said, it is intended to where if you're called to return to work, you must return to work. And for those that don't, if, let's say, they are. they are unable to return, we will obviously know. And then it does, you know, cite that our disciplinary policy is, you know, will be explored if we feel, if people aren't following the policy. And then obviously, those privileges would just be limited or taken, really just taken away. But.
Do you get, do you get much, probably, I don't know if you do anymore, do you get much traffic in on your HR office?
No, most of it's over the phone. And so it's not.
If, if you are gone, then both your people are able to perform any duty there if they had an employee or somebody off the street come in?
Yes. So with their, with the reorg that we did where I have two generalists covering, essentially, any of the three of us could step in and do FMLA, you know, help somebody apply for a job, handle disciplinary action if needed. So. And, and that's the whole, you know, it's not that, ideally, there won't be a reduce in services. It's just, it might look a little different. It, you know, and especially if, our phone system is a big one right now for most of people at the courthouse. Like, I don't have, my only work phone is in the office, and I can't forward my calls to my cellphone, nor do I really want to do that. But that's something that we'll be working on. And that's, again, you know, with IT and building maintenance as well, to until we get phones that are, I guess, internet-based, where you can answer them through the laptops and things like that. Those are things that departments are going to have to take into consideration. And we've also said, if you don't, if you can't come up with eight hours of work, you know, checking email is not sufficient work.
Correct.
I'm going to go home and check my email. Or I'm just going to be, you know, calling in and checking my voicemail. That's not sufficient. It has to be something that would equate to, you know, at least eight hours of work in a given day. So.
Just a quick question. Assuming this, we passed this. I know that there's, maybe coming, maybe coming back to the board, just overall talk about the policy and implementation. From an individual standpoint, is there a reevaluation period? So, hey, this is working for this employer, this isn't, right? Is there, is there a sort of prescribed, I didn't see it in here, or was that discussed?
On the application, which I didn't send to you guys, but the application says that it's only, it's good for one year.
Okay.
And it does have to be evaluated each year. It doesn't, if you are in probation, as in a new hire probation, you aren't allowed to work, because obviously, we need to evaluate your quality of work and things like that as you are onboarded. So, but yes, it is intended to be reviewed at least once a year. That certainly could change. It could be, you know, every six months. I would expect that they're going to be, managers are going to be evaluating this more frequently anyways. But, yeah, we left it on the application as a year. But I can add that, I can certainly add that into the policy. So it's a little bit more clear, because it isn't, I don't think it is cited that way.
I think it might be good just to add that in, but.
Oh, and you mentioned, like, not, not doing the micromanaging, but that seems like that would be a, maybe a good report.
Yeah.
Maybe for us to receive, too, just how many people and what departments have signed on to do this and.
Yep. So part of this, once they complete, so the way, if this gets approved, they do have to, there's an application process and it's the agreement form. And they do have to go through an initial, all these things, and basically explain what they're going to be doing, what their work hours are going to be, their supervisor, department head mark off, or sign off on that. Then they do have to complete the telework survey. So we've set up a survey simply to just collect data easily as what departments, what job classifications, what employee, how often are they working? So that we can kind of provide that data on that annual basis. But that's, it's just to collect it and to evaluate the program, to see where it's working well and where maybe it's not explored, but maybe the recorder's office has done it, but another office that's set up similarly hasn't, they're, you know, curious, well, how does that work? Well, they, you know, limit it to this certain task. And so those, you know, clerical positions can do, if you're assigned to that task that week, such as indexing. But generally, we're not going to see five requests from the recorder's office to work remotely, because as Tom pointed out, they're very public-facing and they serve the customers. And there's no real flow other than people coming eight to 4:30 to the courthouse. So.
Would this apply also, this policy, to department heads?
Yes.
So they can, so they can work remotely, a department head?
Yes. So if, if they were to submit, like, I want, if I wanted to work regularly one day a week from home, I would submit that to the board. If Al wanted to do that, he would submit it to the board. I've done it very limited. Like, I would say, when we did the classification and compensation study, I kind of just needed eight hours to not be interrupted to get through those RFPs. So that was an example of where I just worked from home, because, you know, we do get a lot of interruptions on the phone or things like that in HR, where you just sometimes need a block of time to just crunch something out. So. But yeah, a department head would be entitled to this as well, or at least would be allowed. So.
A department head can curtail this at any point in time if they see it's not working, or they just prefer not to do it.
And the board could curtail it for a department head. So if I'm as responsive or a given period, and you're like, then you could say, Amanda, we're going to sit down and talk about this, and we're going to take that privilege away. So.
Well, since it is so new, I said, the monitoring part, or at least the reporting part, looking at it every six months, I think when it first starts out is very good. I like to know how.
Looking at the numbers, I think is fine.
And see, you know, what we have. And that department heads think it's good or working or whatever. But, yeah. Ultimately, I said, I always like the interaction of all the staff. So I think I've said all along, having everybody here is, to me, a plus, a positive for whether it's interacting with each other or, you know, us going to somebody for information. So you tend to, when people are absent, then you go to someone else that is present. And so there's something lost in that, too. So I understand businesses wanting to kind of bring people back on site for, whether it's productivity or just simply working together and kind of being part of the team, because you tend to lose something. But with two days maximum.
Yeah.
You know, that's up to the department heads, I'm hoping. So if it doesn't work, then they make that decision.
I think a lot of the reporting that I've read has been about companies that went full remote and then are rolling back from that. But this isn't anywhere near that.
Right. We're just baby stepping into hybrid and.
Yeah.
And it was a good opportunity to kind of take our time with this a little bit and just see how it worked for some of those pilot groups. And, but yeah, you're right. I mean, there, I've had discussions, and they say, well, you do lose a little bit of that networking connection. But I think as long as we do keep it limited, that we do keep it as hybrid, we'll evaluate it again in six months. And, and it would be nice to, you know, even just collect feedback from supervisors, from employees that have been teleworking, you know, tell us about your experience. And, yeah, because it's their responsibility to continue to, you know, service in the role that they're hired to do. So.
I appreciate the fact that Policy Committee took the time, so that other folks could sort of be the guinea pigs a little bit. I think there definitely is an expectation of the modern workforce. And while we may not lead on compensation, we're trying to catch up, but we may not lead there. This is one of the, one of the things that has become an expectation, some level of flexibility from employers for a better work-life balance.
Especially if you sit behind a desk in front of a computer
Correct.
and a phone. I mean, people understand, yes, if I'm servicing the public at a counter, if I'm handling cash or payments, like, that's a little different. And they do also understand that, you know, it's, we're funded by taxpayer dollars in this building as well, and that we need to be here present. But also, I think us as an employer recognizing that, yes, things have just evolved.
Yeah.
And I don't know anybody that's totally going to revert back to just no flexibility for those positions that it really are eligible for. So. But thank you for the discussion. Are there any other questions? Or I guess with, if it is approved, I will roll it out sometime this week and get the, you know, we will kind of start that application process. So you, as board members, may see some of those. Chris, I'll probably forward those to you and the other board members, if we get any from department heads, or just direct them to, provide them to the board.
Okay.
Great.
All right. Any further questions, board? All right. There is a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Paul?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
No.
Chalka?
Yes.
Yes. Resolution is approved. Item G, discussion possible board action with the policy revisions to the employee-driving policy approved effective October 29, 2024, as recommended by the Policy Review Committee.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All right.
Okay. So these are a little quicker discussions, but it was recommended that we modify a few things, mostly the post-accident drug and alcohol testing, and with the dollar amount when it comes to equipment damage. But we also noted that we updated our moving violations to remove seatbelt violations when we evaluate applicants for pre-employment and candidates, or I'm sorry, and active employees who drive. If they get a seatbelt ticket, that's not actually a moving violation under the code. So our policy says that it would be, you wouldn't be insurable after so many moving violations. And that's really not the case, because it's not recognized as a moving violation. It's really more of a safety discussion. And this is, again, people not wearing seatbelts in their own personal vehicle, as to where this is being updated. We do require employees that are operating our equipment or vehicles to wear seatbelts. And if they're not wearing seatbelts and get cited, while they won't be in violation of, like, they wouldn't lose their license over this and not be able to drive, but we would have a discussion about safety. And if it's a repeat offender, move through the disciplinary process. So. But the main thing here, too, in that what you'll see in the next policy revision is the post-accident drug and alcohol testing. And again, our policy said that the limit was, if, they kind of identified or defined what an accident was. And it said that someone, an employee who got in an accident would be tested for drug and alcohol if the accident involved the loss of a human life, if they received a citation under state or local law, or moving violation arising from the accident. An injury is treated away from the scene as pursuant to Iowa Code Chapter 8, 8.6b. Occupational health and safety or a vehicle must be towed away from the scene, or this is what's being removed. The incident results in property damage to an apparent extent of $1,500. So this is what's tripped up our departments a lot. It just doesn't take much. You could get into a small fender bender, and that's going to cost you $2,000. And now we're sending somebody for drug testing when it really was kind of a minor accident. So I worked with Kathy Nicholas on this. She is really first with the DOT's post-accident drug and alcohol testing program. And so she, you know, we looked at this, we talked with PDCM, and it's something that either we remove it, or we really raise that to be kind of more in line with the vehicle must be towed away. So you would be looking at something like damages. I think the DOT, the state does like $15,000 possibly, 10 or 15,000. So if the board wanted to put an amount in there, we're just requesting that it be much higher, or we just remove this and define our accident as the four criteria that I already listed. So that is the update for that.
Yeah. And I think that the, in the, in the Policy Review Committee meeting, I think that the example that Kathy cited was just, you know, if a truck even just still on the lot, on our property, accidentally backs into something, you know, that's automatic, it's pretty easy to get to the 2,000 threshold and.
Right.
Then this policy, as it is, becomes pretty cumbersome.
And then even when we have those out plowing snow at 4:00 AM, and they slide off into a ditch, and or they hit something, and, you know, then it's like, well, do you take them off and, in the snowstorm, quit plowing snow and go get them tested, and they have to stay off? I mean, our managers are all trained on reasonable suspicion each year. We do have drug testing that, where they could evaluate somebody for concerns of reasonable suspicion, and that's what we would like to rely on more. Anytime there's an accident, manager does have to be on site to evaluate it and provide an incident report. But yeah, some of these, you know, conservationists had some minor incidents in facilities as well, to where it seems a bit cumbersome to send someone for testing almost unnecessarily because of the way the policy is written. So that's the recommendation. Again, it's not to, if somebody is having repeat incidents, repeat accidents of a small value, that will be handled through progressive discipline and has in the, in the past. So.
Makes sense. All right. Board, any further questions? All right. I'll first vote on item G here. I believe we have a motion. Yes. All right.
Do we have one?
Let's all like.
Yeah.
We do. Okay. All right. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Yes.
Works. Yes. Resolution is approved. Next is item H, discussion possible board action with the policy revisions to the drug and alcohol-free workplace policy and testing program for individuals not required to possess a CDL and drug and alcohol policy for DOT drivers. Be approved effective October 29, 2024, as recommended by the Policy Review Committee.
So moved.
It's moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. I believe we already mostly covered this last discussion. Is there anything else? Any other questions people, people have?
It's the same information, just in different policies. So, yep. And I do want to know, I believe we're going to, I haven't sent out an invitation for the next policy review, but we're trying to get on at least on every other month basis. So these were from September. I gave October to get it updated to the board. So we'll try to come back in November for any topics. So I'll be sending that email out to department heads and the board if anybody wants to request policies to be reviewed. Thank you.
All right. If there's no further questions, roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Little?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Paul? Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Works.
Yes. Resolution is approved. Item 10, any reports or information from the board? Have you none? I'll, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All aye. All opposed, same side. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.